My name is Dan Leslie. Before we start the meeting, I want to read something for you. Good evening. The regular school board meeting for the Washington, Missouri School District. My name is Dan Leslie. As I said, I'm the school board president and I'll be conducting the meeting. If you have a cellphone, would you please put it on silent so it doesn't disrupt our meeting? The Washington, Missouri School Board is governed by Section 162 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri. This is a public meeting, but it is not a participatory meeting. Other than the time set aside for public comment, the school board does not entertain questions or discussion for the public at this meeting. Our powers and duties of the school board in Missouri is set by state statute in Section 162. We are vested with the power and duty to maintain a governance standard, manage the superintendent, who is our only employee, encourage ongoing education in the district, review policies of the district, evaluate policy implementation, review budgets and finance, and evaluate the instruction and education of the district. Present at the meeting tonight, besides myself, is our superintendent, Dr. Jennifer Kephardt, who's seated to my right, Mr. John Freitag, school board member, Ms. Kelly Brinkman, school board member, Julie Bell, who is our "We Can't Live Without" school board secretary, Mr. Matthew Freitag, our student representative, Mr. Scott Byrne, to my left, who's a school board member, Ms. Susan Thatcher, who's a school board member, Robin Kleisner, who is our Director of Accounting. Did I get that right? If I call you Rachel tonight and Rachel, Robin, it's a long story. Rachel Franzen, and Miranda Anderson, and John McCullough are assistant superintendents. The mission of the School District of Washington is this: Our mission is to inspire achievement, character, and personal growth in all students as they pursue and succeed in college careers and life. And with that, if you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Get my chair together here. All right. Our first item on the agenda is the mission of the school district, and I have read that. Our district goals for 2022-23: Increase student achievement and support; Ensure a culture of belonging; Expand innovative practices and workforce connections; Engage the staff at meaningful professional learning and quality district support. We will come to special recognition.
All right. Yes, we have several special recognitions tonight. So nice to see you all in the audience. We will start and have Mr. Dekelmann join us at the podium for just a moment, while he will get a chance to introduce the girls' golf team and share a little bit about state cross-country. We first want to be able to recognize Mr. Dekelmann. So Mr. Dekelmann has been working with the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association, and we are able to announce that he has been named and has been certified as a Certified Master Athletic Administrator. And this is a very elite group of athletic administrators nationwide that actually attain this level of professionalism. Not only did he have to do certain aspects of the work of an athletic director, but also had to do a project and then present his information to the NIAA. Would you share just a little bit about the projects that you did or the work that you did to be able to be certified?
Sure. It's kind of a three-pronged approach. You have to offset for a certain amount of courses. You have to gain a certain amount of points on what they call a professional data file, and which is like a combination of hosting things, speaking at places, classes you've taken, all this serving in offices, et cetera, et cetera. And then you also have to do a project, and it's supposed to be like a master's or graduate-level course project, and it has to be something that you've implemented. And so my project was over the implementation of an Athletic Hall of Fame at the high schools, so.
So we know how special Mr. Dekelmann is to our district and to the athletics in the School District of Washington and really throughout our region, but now it's not just regionally or throughout the state of Missouri, it is nationally. So please join me in recognizing and giving Mr. Dekelmann a big round of applause.
Thank you.
And don't get any ideas about leaving.
And you get to stay up because now you get to do one of your favorite things, because I know you well enough that your favorite thing is to recognize students. So we will start with our golf team. We are excited to be able to recognize that our golf team placed fifth at the state tournament, first time headed to state in having golf at Washington High School. So excited that going and placing. So I'll let you share a little bit about the team and recognize the coach and the girls.
And I do love to recognize our kids. I'm going to let Coach Fisher, since he's here, steal a little bit of my thunder, as he is with these girls in the trenches every day on the golf course, but I can tell you, they survived. You could not have paid me to play golf on the two days that they had to play golf at the state championships, any sum of money, because it was just miserable conditions. And these girls are both physically tough and skilled, but mentally tough to gritted it out and to have played 36 holes in, again, deplorable, miserable conditions. But I'll let Coach Fisher come up and comment on the season that they had.
Coach Fisher, what we are going to ask... We will share a little bit about the team, but then we will ask if you will introduce the girls that are with you that joined you at state, and then we would like to recognize them with their certificate, some treats, and a picture.
Sounds good. First off, thank you all for having us here. Really thank the girls. You know, if it wasn't for them, I wouldn't be standing here right now, obviously, and just their determination. You know, we started the season out, had two injuries. That activity of dance, we dropped somebody on the floor, so we dealt with the back injury. And then unfortunately, we may or may not have hit a teammate in the face with a golf ball at practice and missed a couple matches. So although we missed a few, we started out pretty slow, lost two of our three matches, but then they rattled off nine in a row, and they didn't lose another match the rest of the season. And obviously, their determination and just their grit out of all of them. Something I realized when I was kind of putting this together today is, when we went to state, we went to state with a freshman, a sophomore, junior, and a senior. So not only did we have somebody, you know, from each class, that was just pretty neat. First time they ever got out of districts and on to state, we had a team four years ago get out of districts, but they had a sectional round at that time because Missia likes to change things on us. But this is the first time that we got to state, and the girls really did perform well. It's a total different beast when you're at state golf and playing in 34-degree weather when they don't start it till 11 o'clock and pray that you get done by noon with stuff. It was difficult for all, but for the kids to experience that for the first time, hopefully it'd be 75 and sunny if they go back. So our four members of the golf team, one is our freshman Abby Blackwell. Second is our sophomore Ella Martin. Third is our junior Molly Bushman. And fourth is our lone senior this year, Isabella Fitzgerald.
and cross-country in December, so more to come. And ladies, while we certainly appreciate you being here, you do not have to stay for the remainder of the meeting because I'm sure that you have plenty of homework or sleep to catch up on. So know that you are welcome, but it is okay that you exit.
Next, we move to the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
A motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will move forward. Public comment. Ms. Bell, is there any public comment? Okay. Get down to the rest of my stuff here. All right, we're now to, well, if I can get my computer to work here. We're now to reports on the Early Learning Center.
I would like to see if Dr. Hellebush would come join us and share a little bit about our Early Learning Center.
Good evening. I am happy to be here tonight to highlight a little bit of information about our Early Learning Center goals this year. Matthew and I could have tagged team tonight because he came to visit our building this week, so that was a pleasure for us also, for him to take a tour. So I'll try not to hit on the same things he's going to hit on tonight. So we'll kind of start out. Goal one, kind of tying into increasing student academic achievement. Our goal is that 80% of our preschool students will achieve mastery on identified priority standards. Obviously, our goal is preparing our students to be ready for kindergarten. Last year, DUCY updated the Missouri Early Learning Standards, and we've been working to revise and align our curriculum, our quarterly progress reports, where we report progress to parents, and our learning materials to align with these standards. We've identified 14 of those progress report indicators this year at each age level across the various domains that we're utilizing to measure progress toward this goal. Currently, at the first quarter, we don't have any students that are meeting this goal, which we would expect, like, it's only the first quarter. But we are going to utilize this information throughout the year then to determine if we need to be doing intervention or enrichment for our students through quarterly review meetings and also PLC work throughout the school year. Our second goal, aligning with the culture of belonging, is increasing positive staff and student culture through a focus on Character Education Principles 3, 4, and 5. We chose these principles based on feedback from the Character Plus walkthrough last spring, as well as district students, and also the importance of teaching self-regulation and social skills at the early childhood level. Preparing children to be successful learners in the classroom is at the heart of everything we do at the early childhood level. You have to be able to participate as a part of a group, manage your behavior, and get along with others, or it'll be difficult to learn anything, and you're going to miss out on a lot of opportunities due to those barriers. So when we look at Principle 3, that kind of touches on having a comprehensive and intentional approach to developing character. So when we think about those things in our building, like, we have the focus on rock, like, as the whole district, like, respect, ownership, commitment, and kindness. Along with that, some of the pieces that we do is, one of our pieces of our Tier One curriculum is a second step program. It focuses... program. It focuses, it's like a daily curriculum piece that works on teaching some of those social skills and self-regulation, along with conscious discipline, with some intervention pieces that we can use for students. So we're consistently doing direct teaching, modeling, coaching, and reinforcing of all of these skills with our students every day, implementing those Tier One expectations. Some of the photos on here just kind of show some examples of things, pieces that you might see with that. Like, the group at the top is doing some learning of self-regulation. It's like a group where they work on, like, it's taking care of other things and then other people. Bob and Betty are puppets at the bottom. They go along with our second step curriculum. You'll see the picture, all the little pictures are class jobs. So within all of our classrooms, students have jobs that help them take responsibility and ownership for their classroom and the things in it. And then the last picture in the corner shows one of our calm spaces in our classroom. And so they'll all look different in classrooms, but they're just kind of cozy spaces for the students. Principle IV is about creating a caring community and those caring relationships. And again, those are things that we're working on every day within our environment. Some of those connections that we're trying to make every day between staff and our students look like hugs, high fives, smiles, having special sayings, like, the list goes on and on. Between staff and students, but also students and students, we have, if you look at the pictures on the next slide, in the bottom corner, you'll see that's a wish-you-well board. And so all of our classrooms have those. They might look different in different classrooms, but it's some variation of that, where they'll have student pictures or student names. And so like, the big heart is the students there that are there that day, and then there'll be maybe a small heart of students that might not be there. And so we're always thinking of every person and anybody that's not there. We wish them well when they're not there at school. They also have a wish-you-well song that they do during the day. Matthew could attest to that. He participated. Daily greetings. Being the greeter is generally one of the classroom jobs that somebody might have, and usually the students can choose what kind of greeting they want to get. It might be a high five. It might be a fist bump. It could be a smile. It could be a variety of things that they might choose. Family boards, that was another one of the pictures that are within our classrooms. Like, we love our families. Our families are a big part. Our home families are equally as important as our school family. So those are very important, and those are very important to our students to have that touchstone as well. And then you'll also see we have our school family board, so that's even a part to create those staff connections also. Principle V, Opportunities for Moral Action. So that's where we spend and work on focusing on those service learning projects. We try to make sure that every student has an opportunity to focus on a, one of our goals this year is, every student has an opportunity to focus on a service learning project during the school year. So it depends what the classroom chooses for their service learning project. Some of them might be a service learning project that might only involve their classroom. Some of them might be a project that might involve the whole school. This, these are some pictures from our first quarter service learning project, which was a food drive for Loving Hearts. And that was something that these two classrooms put together that the whole school had the opportunity to participate in. And you'll see with that project, there were lots of curriculum pieces woven into that. There was sorting. There was counting. You'll see students tallying the things, charting information. So they made all the signs that you can see in the background on there. So they took part in a lot of that work, and they decided to take on that project when they found out that Loving Hearts was running low on food in their food pantry. So that kind of drove their decision to do that project. So truly a service learning project. So that's just kind of, so they're getting ready to start on their second quarter project, and I don't know what that will be yet. So we'll have to see if it's an all-school project or just a one or two-classroom project. Goal three, exposing, our goal, our connection to that is exposing students to at least eight different careers through our curriculum themes and/or service learning projects. Examples might be teacher, scientist, meteorologist, fireman, police officer, and on and on. These opportunities often occur at our level within the themes that happen throughout the year, virtual field trips, guests that might come into our school, the dramatic play area within the classroom. So there's lots of opportunities to tie these different careers into the classroom and expose students to some of these ideas at their level and a broad range of things for them to explore. And in the first quarter, we had classrooms that have ranged anywhere from two to up to six careers so far that they've kind of worked on. So. And then our fourth goal in regard to professional development is to strengthen our Tier One instruction through consistent bi-weekly PLC meetings for all teachers. Obviously, the reason we want to have professional learning is to improve instruction. So our goal with our PLC meetings is that we will see an increase in instruction. We have several different teams that work throughout the year toward those goals and support that work. We have our PLC leadership team that meets bi-weekly, and we are really fortunate that we have six of our team members within our building that attended the PLC Summer Institute. And I feel like for a building of our size, I felt like that was really, really positive. And that is really helping drive some of the work within our building and really providing some good support. Because then when we have our three different teams of mixture of all of our staff members and all of our teachers and therapists, we have at least one of those leadership team members that can participate on each of those teams and provide that leadership. So that just helps strengthen our teams. We also have, within our classrooms, we also have paras that work really closely with our teachers, and their relationship and their work is really integral with each other. And they have to work really closely and help support our students. But they don't also get a lot of time to communicate with each other. So it was really important for them and for us as a building to try to work together, to try to come up with a way to do that. So we've become really creative with helping cover for each other and try to come up with a way to make that happen. So with people being willing to cover and make that work out, they've come up with a way that they're also able to meet every other week. So the teacher and the classroom par have that opportunity to collaborate to make sure that they can effectively meet the needs within their classroom for their students also. So I think that's pretty awesome. And then we also have our character leadership team that helps drive that work and our safety team. And all of those pieces have to work together to help support learning because they all are important to help make that function. So that's kind of like our, just kind of nuts and bolts, just kind of like a brief overview. I could go on and on about all the things that they're working on and doing. I feel very fortunate to have a school family that is made up of some very committed and caring adults. I'm gonna get emotional. Very committed and caring adults that, we are very lucky that as the other part of our school family, we get to work with really amazing children and families. And all of us together making that family that get to do this good work every day. So we're very appreciative of that.
John, how many kids do you have there?
We have about 100 and, oh gosh, we just added a few kids. Can't say 140-ish right now.
And what's the age range for them?
Two to five.
And you do service projects. I am impressed for kids that age. That's awesome.
Yeah.
You did a great job.
And they really enjoy it. They're really enjoy it. And it's, and I think we're actually really lucky. I think sometimes you overlook or take for granted all the different curriculum components that you can tie into all of those projects. It's the most authentic way to learn. And so
Fantastic.
Very awesome. Really cool.
Any other questions for?
Dr. Hellebush, you talked about 140-ish kids. Those are full and part-time, I assume?
They are.
Half-days and full-days?
All of our tuition students are tuition waiver students. Our full-day, early childhood, special education students are part-time.
Any idea on capacity? How many more kids could you take?
Well, early childhood, special ed, as many as qualify because we, that's what we'll do, because we have to. And we would want to. Tuition, I would say two more classrooms, so 36-ish? Depending on the age.
You get, so ones that are tuition-assisted, do you get many that you have to turn away? Are you not getting enough applicants to fill everything, or are you at capacity for that?
No, yeah, we have a waiting list right now for.
Well, and as a reminder, we opened another classroom this year. So there was an additional classroom for this year as well.
So there's a waitlist for those that need tuition assistance?
Well, there's just a waitlist for our tuition program.
Okay. Good deal. So our kids have been fortunate to participate in the learning experiences at the ELC and the Early Learning Center, and I'm grateful for those. Comparing that 140, has that increased in this last year with the greater need for kids? You know, we're seeing just test scores overall, like, just looking at how kids are moving through. Have we had an increase in enrollment in the last year or two?
We have increased from last year because we did add a classroom. So we did increase our enrollment from last year. Now, prior to that, we had decreased because of COVID numbers. We purposely capped some of our classroom numbers because we stayed open and didn't do any of the hybrid classrooms or learning. We kept our students full-time, but we kept lower numbers.
Okay.
And then, so we did decrease from where we were before that, but now we're pretty much back up to where we were.
Okay. Great. Thank you. So are the majority of the students then full-time?
The majority of our students are full-time students.
And what's the rate for someone to attend just without any tuition assistance per month?
It depends if you're five days a week, full day, or part day, or two days, or three days. It's, but basically, if you're an extended-day student, five days a week, it's like $36 a day.
Okay.
I can say I was fortunate enough to be around back when we cut the ribbon on that building and opened up. And I said it then, and I'd say it now, that if there's a crown jewel of this district, it's that facility. You guys do extremely amazing things out of that building.
Thank you. Like I said, we have some very caring and committed people, and we do have some awesome students and families. And all together, that makes an awesome school family that helps us do really great things. And I wish we could have all of our pre-kindergartners that wanted to attend, be able to attend before they went to kindergarten, because I think that would be pretty amazing. But, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we move into acknowledgement of a gift for the district. Do you want me to read that, or are you? Okay. For those who don't know, the late Mr. Larry Tobin, former art teacher for school district of Washington, named both the elementary art department and Washington High School art department as beneficiaries in his will. The Board of Education on behalf of the district would like to publicly acknowledge this most thoughtful and generous gift. This is yet one more example of Mr. Tobin's love, dedication, and lifelong appreciation of the school district of Washington. I knew Mr. Tobin, and I know how much he appreciated the art department.
Can I jump in real quick? I just want to recognize his sister Joyce and her husband are here to be able to
Oh, fantastic.
have us acknowledge and say thank you for Mr. Tobin's many years of service to the district and this generous gift both to the high school and the art department. So wanted to be able to acknowledge that.
He was well-loved by a lot of kids. Absolutely. Thank you.
And then served well on our wings board after that. So I had a chance to know him from our wings board as well.
Then as part of this, we have, as a board, need to approve the waiver of publication and notice the filing of final settlement. And I'll take the moment as an attorney to explain a little bit about what that means. So those that don't know, when there's an estate that is ready to close, there is a arduous process that can require a lot of newspaper publications, a lot of money to be spent, and a lot of time that is, in most cases, unnecessary. Or that can be waived, but the beneficiaries of items contained in a will must do that. And so the waiver of publication that we're looking at, if you see it on your screen, is to waive the requirement that the Missourian make a lot of money by having a very lengthy publication for Mr. Tobin's final estate. So I would need a motion to approve waiving the publication and notice the filing of final statement.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions on that? All right, it's been moved and seconded that we approve the waiver of publication and notice the filing of final statement. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, that carries. Thank you. And thank you for coming, folks, very much.
Yes, thank you very much.
Next, we have MSBA monthly board report. And that's, it's just available to read. I thought John might, since John's our big MSBA delegate, I thought he might have something to say. Okay, that is in for you to review. The Fall Conference and Delegate Assembly Update. The Missouri School Board Association MSBA Fall Conference was held November 3 through 6 in Kansas City. Myself, Dr. Kepphart, Kevin Blackburn, who is not with us this evening, Mr. Fry Todd, Kelly Brickman, and Matthew, Student Representative, attended those. And I will say, Matthew did a breakout session, and the comments were relentless of how awesome he did.
It really was a breakout session with the three of us, but Matthew stole the show, so we could just call it the Matthew Breakout Session.
Well, I was, I was gonna say, his mother's done a fantastic job of raising him.
As the breakout session got going, I faded, just kind of went back into that hedge. You know, it was behind me. I had nothing to do with it.
You have the right to be a very proud dad, since he did a great job. So. Anybody want to comment who was there? I thought it was a great thing. I actually learned a lot. So any other comments or?
No, I had a, I had a number of good sessions that I participated in and took some things back that we will try and implement here over the next 18 months or 12, 12 to 18 months. But it's always a nice time to go up to Kansas City. It was, it was nice to have some camaraderie with the board members who were able to make it. And I appreciate everything that you guys do for taking the time out of your, out of your schedule to do this.
And I was in a different boat because I
least eighteen and a half hours of training that first year. And I just wanted to get mine done. So, um, did some of that online before I went and then finished the all-day session with people from across the state, uh, that were completing that last eight hours. So that was great to kind of be at the end of that. It's always the people that make it worthwhile, I think. I mean, the content's great, but making those connections across the state was wonderful. So we, and they published this on the website, but those that went, you could see all the breakout sessions and it was great. We even kind of strategized, I don't think any of us went to the same one, except we all went to see Matthew, of course. But it was great because then I feel like each of us can come back with different perspectives. So, and the district paid for, um, the hotel room. You know, we, each of us got up there on our own dime. I think we could probably submit that, but on our own dime and, and just what that looks like. And sometimes the public wonders, how does that, uh, how does that work? When we were going through the trade show, Bond Associates had, uh, some flyers that actually included our buildings. So that was great to see that they're showing people across the state, hey, here's the model district and here's what we can do for you. So, thank you, John, for spending all that money, um, for us. And then there was a student art contest that has been shared by the, um, by MSBA Center for Education Safety. So I brought some copies, but maybe I could, uh, contact MSBA and get that to you, Dr. Kephart, if we share that with, with our schools. So it's a, show me I'm worth stopping for bringing attention to the need of drivers to stop when they see school buses and giving kids avenues to, um, to share that message. First prize wins fifteen hundred dollars, so you know my kids are in on that. And, so those were some of my takeaways I had, um, with the conference. And then I visited with MSBA afterwards because as we're talking about, uh, school board filing coming up here in the next couple of notes, you know, MSBA on their website has a new board member area, but having just walked through that, it didn't provide a lot of information in some areas. And so I had a chance to sit down with them at their booth and ask if they could help provide that. Because we went through the training, the eight hours, and there were certain pockets that would have been nice to have here. And I think can help the public overall when you're wondering, how do we work with the school board and what is everyone's role? So it's great to have that open dialogue with them, um, to perhaps provide more resources for people walking the same path that I did. So, I was glad to go and wish that we had time to kind of debrief it all, but is a, everyone's on different schedules and, no.
Any other comments? We met a fabulous woman named Cindy.
He did.
At our farewell lunch at our favorite, at Dr. Kephart and I's favorite French restaurant on the Plaza. So that was a good termination of the week, weekend, so. Okay, next we will move on to, uh, the younger Mr. Freitag for our Student Representative Report. Should I say the much?
Good evening. So for this month, I decided I wanted to visit the, um, Early Learning Center Ever District, and I love dancing with pre-kindergartners. They have a lot more moves than anybody my age. So, and just a little disclaimer, I did have five doctor, um, five people who had doctorate education like my tweet about the MSBA. So I'm just saying, pretty big deal. So, the first thing I would like to talk about is the system of support at the ELC. So, um, Dr. Hellbusch supports our staff, which in turn supports, um, the students that are enrolled there. Um, and there's, you can, when you walk through those doors, you can tell that support in that building is very strong and is intertwined throughout everything they do. Um, also, um, learning by having fun. These kids don't know that they're learning, but they know, um, they're having fun. So, some examples of that is that they're learning their soft skills, communication skills, they're learning their colors, um, alphabet letters, and also a big one I like to point out, empathy towards others. So when you have empathy at a young age, you can just grow and have that chance to be with others and know, um, how to interact with people. And also, um, um, they committing, um, not committing, um, completing state, um, standards also with learning by having fun. Also preparedness. Um, as Dr. Hellbusch mentioned, um, the one big thing about the ELC is that is preparing their kids for kindergarten and life after, um, pre-K. So I want to talk about the classrooms for a bit. So there's ten classrooms at the ELC, six are tuition waiver classrooms, and then four are the ECSE, which are early learning, um, special education classrooms. Um, one thing I find very interesting about the ELC is the Parents as Teachers Program. So we all knows that, we all know that parents are, um, their kids' first teachers, whether that's with, um, speech or knowing their colors or the alphabet or just having basic skills. Parents are always the first interaction that a kid has. With the Parents and Teachers Program, they do screenings for the kids at a young age to see, um, where they're at development, developmentally for their age. Um, and each activity is based on an age level. So there are, there are always those household items that they can use and implement as parents as teachers that the parents can have in their household and they don't need pot, and they don't need to buy like twenty dollars' worth or like a hundred dollars' worth of equipment for their, um, kids. They can just use the ones that are, they can use items in their household. Um, so the next thing I want to talk about is these four bullet points right here. I was happy to have a one-on-one conversation with Dr. Hellbusch, and these ideas kept reoccurring in our, in our conversations. Exploring and creating, problem solving, independence, and celebration. Um, problem solving and independence really goes with those soft skills, just learning how can you be independent, how can you be a critical thinker at such a young age? And like she mentioned, like sorting, tallying up things, um, being one with their community. Um, celebration, you celebrate the littlest things when, um, you're at that age because it means a lot and it's just crazy because those, those little kids have a bunch of energy. Um, I was lucky enough to do a, let me think, um, wish you well dance, as Dr. Hellbusch was stating. Um, I gotta touch my elbows with them, I gotta touch my back with them, I was wishing them well the whole time, and I believe his name was Will. But, um, some overarching goals at the ELC are preparing students to learn in a learning environment. That step going on to kindergarten, participating in groups, completing individual tasks. Um, one thing I want to mention is that picture up there, those nuts and bolts. That is a very diverse tool. You can use it for its mechanics, you, you can use it for its shapes, you can use it for anything. It just teaches children how to be critical thinkers, and we're doing that as a district at such a young age that we are helping our students evolve. Um, and like Dr. Hellbusch said, preparing kids, um, for kindergarten, that's the big thing about ELC, and she does a wonderful job. And I want to thank her for having her in my building. I mean, having, having her and her, having me in her building. Thank you.
Any questions for Matthew? All right, thank you, Matthew. You're always entertaining, you do a great job.
How many kids in the Parents as Teachers Program?
We put that on Thursday Report last month, Parents as Teachers. Do you remember from, it was last, last week's Thursday Report, Thursday Update?
I'm sorry.
I don't have it on the top of my head, but I, she gave a historical, I think you had three years out or five years out?
Yeah, so I read it, I just don't recall then.
It's all right.
Okay, next the school board filings. This is for public announcement. The school board filings for the School District of Washington for the April 4th, 2023 election will open on Tuesday, December 6th, 2022 at 8:00 AM, and will close on Tuesday, December 27th, that should say 2022, I believe, at 5:00 PM. There are three, three-year positions available. It happened to be mine, Mr. Byrne and, um, Mrs. Thatcher are all up this year. Um, school board candidates file in the office of Julie Bell, which is the lady right there in the blue, in the second floor of the School District Building at 220 Locust Street in Washington. A candidate's training event is planned for December 1st, 2022, from 5:30 to 7:00 at the Board of Education Office for anybody who is considering running. And I will say that, uh, I wish I would have attended one of these before I ran for the board. I think they're very, very helpful. Not to say I wouldn't have run, I mean, I think they're very, very helpful. So, I would encourage anybody who's going to run to come to that.
We would have hoped you would have attended one of those too.
Yes, I'm sure that you would have.
But now you get to teach it, Dan.
But look where I am today, oh my gosh.
I will note that we have it planned for the first at this point in time. We don't have anybody signed up. It's early, that's completely fine. But we do have a deadline of the twenty-seventh, the thirtieth, the thir, a deadline of the thirtieth. So if anybody would like to sign up, certainly let myself or Julie know. We are, would be excited to be able to share what it is if you'd like to be a board member.
And I'm one of the speakers and I'm excited about talking to one or more, so. All right, next we have our, uh, reports, superintendent's reports. Go right ahead.
All right, I would like to share to start out, for the month of October, we did celebrate our next Blue Jay Pride Award winner, and that winner was able to be highlighted with a gift certificate from First State Community Bank, and it was Amanda Schweiskuth, one of our instructional coordinators at, um, Locust Street, but helps with all of our teachers. So we were super excited to be able to highlight her, and much of her highlights came from our STEM teachers that recognized, several different teachers had recognized her. So we will be doing our November, uh, uh, Blue Jay Pride winner in just a couple of weeks. Also like to recognize from Martha'sville, we had, and this was actually in the paper just recently, I saw Reed step out, but in the paper was Martha'sville had a five thousand dollar to want to be able to recognize the Bayer, um, America Farmers who are looking at helping support the school garden. And that five thousand dollars will go towards the outside garden that we have already heard from, from Martha'sville and some of the awards that they have received in that realm. And then would also like to highlight, this week and next week are our build days for our sixth graders. We had one day already and it went very, very well. Students had the opportunity to spend twenty minutes in, fifteen to twenty minutes in each of the programs at Four Rivers Career Center and rotate with assistance from our teaching career students, rotate between each of those different programs, do some type of hands-on learning in those programs, so they get a chance at a, at a young, younger age to recognize and benefit from the, the programming that we have at Four Rivers. So we will continue that, Four Rivers will be continuing that for the rest of this week and next week. So excited to be able to have our sixth graders on campus. Every sixth grader in the district will be able to be at Four Rivers in the next two weeks. And that's all I have.
Okay. Reed, we talked about you after you stepped out, so I just thought I'd let you know.
It was all good.
It's great when you talk about the newspaper when they're not around, isn't it? Kelly brought the newspapers, so. All right, next we have budget revision. This is the Robin Kloester hour.
Good evening. It's always fun to get up here and talk about money. So, um, budget revision one, as you all know, we usually do four revisions through the year. As the year goes on, we get more information and things change, things come up. So on the revenue side, Dr. Kephart, if you could bring up that first document there, um, kind of go over what has changed on the revenue side. The main thing is that we got our tax assessed valuation, um, and it was up when we had budgeted back in June. We were anticipating a flat assessment. We ended up coming in with a five percent growth. So we did increase our revenues from our taxes up significantly. Um, on the other local items, um, interest rates are up, so that's up a little bit from what we had anticipated. Um, Four Rivers was able to obtain a Project Lead the Way grant to help fund the transition of the new Project Lead the Way teacher with Mr. King going into the directorship position. So Project Lead the Way paid for one of the courses. Um, and then in the state grant, we also got a fifty-fifty grant from the state to help pay for the other course and help pay for Mr. Goff's stipend for having him go to these courses. So we were able to secure two grants that that helped, um, relieve some of the costs involved that transition. Um, in the county, fines and forfeitures are always paid out in October, so we know the total number there. We did have, had to decrease the budget a little bit by twelve thousand dollars because they came in just slightly lower than what we had anticipated. The other state item that we had is we had some escrow money sitting at MoDOT that we were not aware of, and they refunded that to us. So we had that come in, um, which wasn't a, a ton of money, but it's thirteen thousand. On the federal level, we got a, a Medicaid settlement from 2021, just an additional amount of money after we did our, all of our final reporting. So we had that money coming in. Um, Gears Transportation, we were able to get our summer school busing paid through the Gears Grant so that we could free up our title money to carry over into this year. So that was a good thing. Title I carryover is now reported in the budget. We had a DHSS grant that we paid for last year for COVID response. Um, all the expenses were in last year, we did not get the money till this year, so I had to make a revision for that. And then we also qualified for a homeless child, children and youth grant. So that will be administered through, uh, Mrs. Anderson's department. So our total increase in revenues was one point nine million. Um, on the expense side, summer school is done, so we knew the actual costs on that. We were able to adjust that. Um, we had some ARP money came in through SED, um, and that we invested in salaries for our PPPS program, and we also obtained a Grow Your Own Grant for our teaching program. Um, in the purchase services side, um, we overlooked budgeting for early college, so we had to put that in the budget. That was my mistake. And local tax effort, which is where some of our foster children are attending schools in other districts, that we have to pay those districts for taking care of our kids. Um, supplies, summer school again is done. Um, we had some food service equipment that have been having some struggles, they're getting old, and so there was quite a few repair parts we had to amend their budget for. They also, Food Service, received a grant called the Supply Chain Grant, um, and it there's, it was very specific on what we could use it for. We are using it to help pay our milk bill. So we increased that line item. Um, on the equipment side, we had a Career Center Improvement Grant that came in that we had to budget for those expenses. Um, Gears Two Grant, also we had to budget for those expenses. The warehouse freezer was beyond repair. We ended up having to make some major, or we had to do, it wasn't like a whole freezer, it was just, I forget exactly what that happened. The condensers, we had to replace. Um, we had a couple fencing projects, one at ELC and two at Four Rivers, that were not in the original plan, that needed to get done from a safety standpoint, and then the scoreboards down at the new ball fields. We had to amend that budget. We will be getting funds from the Athletic Association over a couple of years to be able to pay that back. The big change in expenses was our bond defeat since that you approved last month that we have done. So that was the big change, to pay off those bonds and lower our debt. So the total overall expenditure change is two point seven million. Um, then what that does to our overall budget on the other report down on the bottom, it, uh, we did finalize, um, actual for 2122. Um, our ASBR is finalized, as far as I know, unless, unless they come, Dusty comes back and asks us to change anything else. But as of now, we think that's finalized, so we came in at forty-five point one-four percent overall for last year. And with this budget revision, um, it brings us to a projected fund balance of eighty, of thirty-nine point six-nine percent. Oh, we'd love it if it was eighty-nine. No, thirty-nine point six-nine. I read that number wrong. So, if there's any questions, I'll be glad to help answer our, so, Bob, John.
I'm glad that we're still sitting around that forty percent because that gives us some cushion still being uncertain on the cost of food, how that impacts our kids. It is very financially conservative. I know that's what we were aiming for at the beginning of the year, and I'm glad to see that even after these updates, so thank you, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Kloester? Right, we do need a motion, thank you, Robin. We do need a motion to approve. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? It's been moved to seconded that we approve the, uh, budget revisions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay. Next is our report on the concession stand at the new ball fields, Mr. McCullough.
Yes, sir. Thank you. The district released an RFQ on October the nineteenth. We had seven responses, um, and, uh, if you'll pull up the, and I cannot see. Those are the, nope. There you go, that one. It's kind of hard to see there, but, uh, those are the responses that we received. Um, in the grand scheme of things, of course, this isn't a very large project, it's relatively small. We're talking about restrooms, a concession stand, locker room, utility closet, and a storage garage, about approximately a two thousand square foot building is what we have in mind. Um, but I do believe that we got some interest, uh, because we have some architectural firms that would like to establish a relationship with this district. In the grand scheme of things, of course, this isn't a very large project. It's relatively small. We're talking about restrooms, a concession stand, locker room, utility closet and a storage garage. About approximately a 2,000 square foot building is what we have in mind. But I do believe that we got some interest because we have some architectural firms that would like to establish a relationship with this district or maintain a relationship with this district or renew a previous relationship with the district. So I was excited to see the response that we, we received. And if you look at the board policy, it states that the superintendent or designee will, will read through the qualifications and then narrow the list down to three. And it was difficult to do because quite honestly, I believe all seven of these are very qualified firms. And I think we would be good in any direction that the board would decide to go. The only reasons I highlighted the ones that I did, first of all, Performance Services. We have been working with them as far as looking at our locker rooms at the high school that we need to update at some point. And they've, they've come up with some pretty good ideas and, and planning for that for us. And we started some discussions with them about the locker room. And so they already have some familiarity with the project in mind. And so I think if the board decided to go with them, that would be probably the quickest turnaround as far, and as far as ease of moving forward. FGMA, the reason I have highlighted that is because of one person, Lori Everett, who was with Bond. She was fantastic to work with. She left Bond and went to FGMA. And of course, if you, if you got a chance to look at their materials, they've done a lot of similar projects. And I think that would be a good choice. And then Horner Associates was somebody that we had prior experience with, prior to South Point and the middle school. The reason it was also highlighted, Bond is also included in that list. Who, of course, we worked with, with South Point and with the middle school library. So great choices. Policy says to narrow it down to three. I know that kind of puts you guys in a tough boat on making a decision, but I really don't think we can go wrong. If anyone feels strongly from one of the seven on here, I would certainly be open to any of these, whatever the board decides the direction would go. If you ask me to identify one of the seven, I would go with, I would recommend Performance Services just because of where we're at and the, the relationship that we're starting to build with them just for this one simple project. But again, I think we're good with any of the seven.
Can I just make a comment on FGMA?
Sure.
I noticed when I was reading the information, there were actually five people, four came with, I guess, Lori that had worked on South Point.
Yes.
So there's quite a large group that has already worked with.
Yeah. Yeah, and Lori was great and I would love to work with her again. So I think that would be a good, good way to go as well.
It seemed like they were able to give a little spark to the buildings that they did. And this is kind of going to be a
Yeah, I mean, again, we're talking about
Do something.
Yeah, a block building here with a concession stand.
Maybe they could make it a little less ho-hum. I don't know.
Perhaps.
Just a thought.
Yeah. Perhaps.
They did a great job on the middle school.
Kind of looking long-term here, future projects, you know, outside the scope of just this one with, with the firm moving forward. But, but yeah.
And the only thing I didn't really care about for Performance Services was most of the work they've done has been out of state.
Yeah, they're, they're more of a regionalized, they do have an office in St. Louis, but
Right.
They didn't have as much experience in Missouri as some of the others. That's correct. Yes. They had a few districts that they'd worked with and most of theirs seemed like Ohio, Illinois, Midwest regions, Indiana. Yeah. Correct.
Mr. McCullough, if we went with one of the other, the FG, FGMA or Horner or any of the others other than Performance Services, I know that you and Bill and the coaches had worked with Performance Services to at least have a plan in place. Can the others start as quick? Does that, do we need to know a timeline from the other?
That's difficult to answer a timeline. I would say any of the, any of the firms could probably jump on this pretty quick because again, it's not that big of a project. That's, I think Performance Services would have a little advantage when that area is concerned because they're already familiar. They've already been on site. They have a conceptual design already laid out, but I'd say any of these firms could probably turn that around pretty fast. Yeah.
And, and from the perspective of a small project that, I mean, I've, I've never worked with Performance Services. I worked with every other one of these guys. Horner was probably the most familiar because they were our architect here for many, many years. I know them very well. And they're a smaller firm that doesn't give you the glitz that you're looking for. Matter of fact, I, I appreciate them because when they make your presentation, they don't, they don't put glitz in it. They don't do the fancy stuff that you see over at Rockwood and all these other school districts that make your buildings look pretty. They, they, they're functional. But that, that's what I was used to with, with Horner. And FGMA is a top-notch firm as well, so.
I guess my only drawback to Horner was because of the early learning center and the design and the inflammation, implementation problem that we had with that roof. So.
Scott, I think as a board, we're lucky to have people from different industries. And certainly this is your deal. Do you, if you had to pick one, I mean, I'm happy to look for recommendations for people who've worked with these people.
They're, they're all top-notch. I don't know that you could pick one over the other, quite frankly.
It's a good problem to have. I honestly didn't expect this kind of response because it's such a small project. I thought I'd have one or two. When I got seven, I was very surprised.
Any chance we can get some of our students, you know, to, to be involved in this in some capacity? I know that's always a, what we're trying to do at Four Rivers. I don't know if any of these firms are different and can support some of our educational aims.
As far as like in the actual construction phase?
Right, or to come out and see that and to, right, walk with them through it, not necessarily swing anywhere at it, but.
Yeah, I, I don't see any reason why they couldn't make trips over there and observe and maybe help out some. You get into a little bit with your insurance company when you build buildings and you want to make sure, you know, you've got OSHA and all that kind of stuff going on. But there's no reason that I think we couldn't involve them in some capacity.
I think we have to work with the, with the firm too, to see what their liability is.
Right.
It's much more about liability on their end and on our end.
Always the lawyers.
It is always those lawyers.
Scott, are you, your recommendation is Performance Services, correct?
Yes. But again, we're good with, we're good, I'm good with any of them. But for, you know, tonight's sake, and, and I know it's difficult for you guys to make a decision on this when you haven't had a bunch of time to look at all the information. But when you go through those RFQs, be quite honest with you, they're all equal. It's, there was nothing really that just one of them just jumped out and smacked me in the face over the ovens. Look at their pictures, buildings they've designed, they're beautiful. They all have experience in this area. And to me, all things were being equal. It was just Lori that stood out to me and Performance Services, the fact that they're already familiar with the project and ready to go. That's what it boiled down to for me.
Well, I mean, I as a board member trust what you think. It's part of your job, so. So I need a motion to go with a particular company. And I will leave that up to whoever wants to put that motion on the floor.
I'll make a motion. We go with Performance Services.
Second. It's been a motion and second to go with Performance Services. We've had some discussion. Is there any other necessary discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, then we will go with Performance Services.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Thrower's Field. I'd assume that is a John McCullough issue as well.
And a Bill Dekman, even though he may not want to speak, but. So 14th Street Field, that was kind of in play for a number of years as a possible baseball field site. And there was a problem obviously there with space being large enough. And of course, now with it being at the old South Point site, that field has always been used for track and field events, for practice, for throwers, for shot put, disc and javelin. But it's, wasn't really set up for that. It was just kind of, we just used it for that. So now the athletic department and the track coaches would like to make some improvements to that field that it can be used for that purpose with the shot put area, with the disc area and with the javelin runways. Anything to add to that, Bill?
Essentially, it's repurposing of that field that's there now and using it to, you know, provide a quality site when we host events. We've hosted numerous postseason track and field events in the 18 years I've been doing this. We've probably hosted maybe 50% of the time, ended up with one of those because not a lot of schools like to tackle that project because it is quite a bit of work and a strain on your athletic staff, your coaching staff. But essentially, the biggest improvement would be adding a javelin runway. We currently just use grass as a javelin runway, but if you go to like Jeff City High School, you'd see, which is also, they host the state track meet. They have a concrete runway with a track surface poured over top. It's, it's totally different game than throwing on a grass field. And it, and it would just repurpose that site. We'd still be able to use it for things like our high school football practice, our high school soccer when they're displaced off the turf. And, you know, the youth, there's some youth programs in town that utilize that grass area as well. But it would probably turn it into a little less of an eyesore than it sometimes is.
We're talking about the corner of 14th and 47th, is that?
Correct. Yeah, the, the baseball, what, what is a makeshift baseball diamond currently?
So do we have a layout on that or?
Yeah, the, the, there is a layout. Jeff has the layout, but it essentially, it's, it's a concrete runway that's going to take down the backstops, the backstop fencing that's there, remove the stuff that's left over from baseball and you'd have a runway. And then if the discus and the shot put are already there existing, but there'd be additional shot put rings. So you'd be able to, when you practice, have more kids throwing. Currently, we just have one ring over there. It's just quite a bit of concrete work, but it, you might drive by and actually not notice it as much as, as you would think. It's not going to look like South Point baseball softball field to me.
Would that change the use in the community? I think there's some like youth football that happens down there.
The youth, the football field would still be in place. The baseball field gets used sometimes. A lot of people hop on there without even going through our office and we don't have people up here to kick them off, so they just use it. But we do have, we have a difficult time maintaining that dirt diamond. We don't have anybody designated to do that. So it, a lot of times in the summer, it grows over with wee grass. And so, but the, the youth football or, there'll still be a giant grassy area for people to utilize for sure.
Okay. And so I'm sorry, then would it remove that entire baseball diamond area?
It removed that backstop. I mean, there'll be some dirt left there. We don't have any plans to like sod and things like that currently, but eventually it'd probably just grow over with some sort of grass weed next year, I guess, is the best thing I'd say.
Okay, got a guy behind you here, yeah?
We would remove the backstop and everything, all the bits and pieces that are, we come out. The gentleman room would start just a little behind that backstop and watch about the turn to pitcher's mound. So that whole green grassy football practice field area would be left untouched. So all the junior Jason stuff would still utilize it.
All right, thank you.
As far as funding, Dr. Kephart has a quote-unquote special fund. And she has graciously agreed to allow for this project to come out of that special fund if, if the board would decide to approve it, so.
Nice, right. I was asking where the funding was coming from, so tell us about this.
That is the Superintendent Capital Project Fund. It's something that went back to Dr. Van Leer. During the year things like this pop up and we like to have a fund in place to be able to move forward with some of these projects when they happen. So Dr. Kephart probably had other things in mind with that money, but she's agreed to, to go forward with this if the board would like to move that direction.
John, there, I saw the bid was 37.9 and then another spot said 41,000.
For, we like to do the two alternates. So, because they have to cut into that hillside. And so we wanted to come back in and backfill and seed. That was one alternate and the other one was? Oh, weed mat, so we don't have to worry about weed growth in the chat.
And KJ, you'll do all that?
Yes, KJ.
So you'd prefer we approve the $41,000?
We would like to go with the two alternates. Yes.
Mr. Chairman, beans that the board didn't agree with my tremendous proposal to put a beautiful baseball field on that property with a big green monster wall on Highway 47? Blue. I'd like to concur with the recommendation, Superintendent.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, sir.
And is there a second?
Second.
It's been a motion and second that we approve the bid with the two alternates. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, that carries. Thank you, John. Okay, we're back to summer school. I assume that is Miranda Anderson.
Yes, I love that you guys are in the mood of saying yes tonight, so we will just skip right to, I need money for summer school?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Um, you know, we've talked for the last, well, I've been here a little over a year now. And I know we've talked pretty much that whole time about summer school off and on and how it's been historically a half-day program for the past several years anyway. While it's involving title funding, it just creates a little difficulty. You can't allow a full-day program when you're using title funding in the afternoon. It can only go to title attendance centers. Coupled with, we are using, with the increase in salaries, we are using the title funding as it should be to help our students increase their learning and we're trying to maximize theirs. So over time, we've come to the point where it's time to look at seeing if there are other options for funding. As Robin said earlier, we were able to gain 35-ish thousand dollars, we didn't know we were getting at the end of the school year, to go back into title, summer, or into Title One this year. So what I would like to propose is that last year for a half-day program, we spent roughly $142,000 local money. I would like to see if you guys would consider extending that to $185,000 to pay for full-day programs so that all of our students could attend the full day and remain with title funding for transportation. That would only allow transportation for the, for, for students that attend the four title schools, which is Augusta, Martha'sville, South Point and West. But summer school in and of itself would be open full day for all students. And we have heard a lot of feedback from parents saying, there's even some that go to surrounding districts so their kids can attend a full day. And I just think it would be very beneficial for our students to be able to, to attend our summer school program if they desire to do so for the full day. And I put a whole bunch of information in there. Some of it came from a committee meeting, some additional information that was requested. So if you're interested in any of that, I just tried to dig up some historical numbers. But I would like to recommend a full-day summer program for all of our students. And with that 185,000, we would, well, I would look for attendance to increase going full day. I'm not, I don't have a crystal ball, but I'm, I'm, I feel pretty confident in saying it would increase if we went to a full day for everyone. And that would increase the funding we get back from the state also. So that is not figured into this. This is just what we got. And I think last year it was around 55,000, 57,000 that we got that from the state with our K-12 program, so.
And Mrs. Anderson, I'm correct that you and your team are working on dates? And right now, this is just dates you do with your team?
Yes.
However, because this is an increase in fund, that's the action from the board today?
The action from the board is requesting that. That's why I didn't go into anything else in the summer school packet. In the summer school packet, I also discuss how we're, we're looking at options into consolidating into two locations, potentially either West or South Point and then Martha'sville or something across the river, just for staffing. Just to give us a few more options to allow maintenance, some more opportunities to get into buildings a little ahead of time. Another thing we are considering, historically, we've seen that once we get into July, summer school numbers tend to drop off a little bit. So considering moving that to, summer school to June potentially, and then providing like activity boards to continue learning throughout the rest of the summer. So that way we can keep learning. I've been in conversations with Ms. Turnbull about the extended school year program and what staff feel. And we're going to have some follow-up with that too before we make any determinations for sure. But when you wait a couple of weeks for kids to go or a few weeks and then, then they lose some ground there with routines and then we go for a little bit and then they look, so we discussed, do they really lose more if we go a couple of weeks in June and a couple of weeks in July? And she said that her staff kind of feels like if they don't have that time in between and go quicker, that, that that does, at least you only have it on one end rather than both ends.
So Dr. Wood, who's not able to be here tonight, and I did meet with you as a part of the committee, the curriculum committee, talking about this. And while I can't speak for him, I would say overall that we received the information well, knowing that we'll be able to serve more students. And there's always that disparity with that title funding. You have to offer something, I think you always say, above and beyond what you offer a student who does not benefit from title funding. And so it is a tricky dance to be able to serve kids from the entire district, but yet offer something a little extra for those that need it. And so I think the solution is great to offer that transportation, knowing that would benefit the title kids and other kids that may need it or students that may need it in that area. So I agree with the thought to move in this direction. And regarding your two other considerations, like consolidating to two locations, you're still kind of looking at some of the details that would be involved. still kind of looking at some of the details that would be involved with that, right? As well as for families, you know, how this would change is that they could send their kid to a full-day program versus there are some that are literally like, it's noon, honey, you have to go home now, because we have to offer more to the title students, and then that kind of points them out, and they get to stay all day. So for families, this would offer a great option, that kids could stay engaged in that learning throughout the day. And then those June dates that you're considering, as we got out our calendars and looked, there would be one week in between the end of school and the beginning of summer school, so it would shorten that window, and it sounds like, be reflective of what you're hearing from the sped teachers, that that would benefit not only their population, but the overall population, and then avoid that Fourth of July breakup with, you know, because our, our kids have attended the summer school program, and it's two weeks, and then, oh, long holiday week, and then come back and try to get into a routine, and bless those teachers who I marvel at every day, but getting kids reengaged two times rather than one. So I appreciate that you are looking at the June schedule as well.
Thanks. We, the thought is it would allow more family time, too, than that month of July, and some more flexibility with travel, as well as allowing our teachers time to prepare for the beginning of the school year and have a little bit of a rejuvenation period in there as well.
Yeah.
And I assume we have the funding. This is not an issue, Robin?
Got a forty percent fund balance.
I just know you protect that money like it's your own, and I want to make sure you're okay.
That's why we have the forty percent.
And it all boils down to privatization of what we do, but I mean, we are very hard here to educate our children.
Absolutely.
And to offer that support, you know, that kids need through the summer, to really support their learning and extend that school year, I'm all for it.
So you're asking for proposal five that's highlighted, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm just asking if you all would be willing to fund a full-day program rather than a half-day program.
And the reason that she's bringing it now, we would normally bring budgetary items in March when we do our, when we do our planning for next year. However, because of how the summer cycle has to run, she has to know this information to begin planning, because we would be hiring by March. So the timing is a little bit off.
Yeah, we have a committee waiting to see your decision tonight, because they're ready to rock and roll with curriculum, and so, and I did outline what that would potentially look like with the full-day program, too, with some project-based learning in the afternoon.
Right. So it'd be different than it's offered in years past?
It would have a little different feel. Summer school's always going to look a little different than your regular school year, because you're going to want more hands-on activities and flexibility and exploration, and, but everything is going to be tied to the Missouri learning standards. Heavy academic focus in the morning, in a fun learning style, more project-based type learning and activities in the afternoon, again, tied to the learning standards.
Yeah, so same type of structure, but we'd change the actual courses.
Yes, we are looking at changing courses, changing, we have lots of things we've been discussing to see what would play out, if we want to do a weekly theme, if we want to do themes by grade level, if we're going to do every other. So a lot of considerations, but we do have a team, we have two teachers from each grade level that are willing to get to work on curriculum as soon as we decide what it's going to look like.
Great.
Right, so the chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. I think this is a fantastic idea. Make a motion to concur with Mrs. Anderson's recommendation to go full-time.
So that would be to approve proposal number five?
Yes, sir.
Right?
I second that.
All right, there's been a motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right.
Thank you.
There you go. Public Committee, get started.
Right now.
Okay, next we have Connect Washington, which I believe is.
Next up, you have me, and here's the nice part, there's nothing, there's no money, no action. I just get a chance to highlight and share some amazing work with, as you notice, we have, we have quite a few faces in our audience today, and majority of those are from our Connect Washington team. So before we start, they have, they have been a part of, I tried to count it as I was sitting up here, they have been a part of at least sixteen of these presentations since the beginning of the summer, and we have given the presentation between them and some work that I have done with some smaller groups, probably twenty-five times. So I am so glad they're here. If you are on the Workforce Connections Connect Washington team, would you stand up real quick? Because several of you are getting ready to come to the podium, but will you all stand up and at least be recognized? Thank you for that. You certainly have seen faces that stood up to be recognized. We, with the Workforce Connections team, have a, this amazing partnership in Washington with the City of Washington. Sal was not able to join us because of another meeting tonight, but you see Tyler King from downtown Washington and Jennifer Giesek from the Chamber, the Washington Area Chamber of Commerce, and the work that our crew, certainly our crew from elementary, middle, high school, counselors, teachers, administrators, this team has been amazing in the work that they have been innovative, the thought process they have used in some of the previous work in the district, and just grown in how we can utilize our workforce and our students to benefit from that next level life after high school. So I will also say that tomorrow, we get a chance, I think it's still a little bit secret, but tomorrow, we get a chance at the East-West Gateway at the lunch, their, their annual luncheon, to be able to recognize both the Chamber, all the Chamber, the city, and downtown for their partnership with us as a school district. And again, it's a partnership that is unmatched in any community that is doing this work. So I appreciate all of our team and appreciate the partnerships with JB, Sal, and Tyler. So with that, I, this is our normal presentation, so I know you know the mission, so I will keep going, but I do want to highlight that when we talk today, it is about all of our students. And I came to this group when we first started working together in October of last year, and I said, our goal coming into the School District of Washington was to have each student experience their workforce passion and interest prior to graduating Washington High School. We know that that's occurring at Four Rivers. How do we expand that to every single graduate? This team said, it's not just about this graduation experience that we're going to highlight in just a moment, but it really is about connecting careers. You heard it even pre-K through twelve. So it's about connecting our careers, and it's about our essential skills. As I shared last year, I've been to about forty of our businesses, and they talk about soft skills. Well, soft skills for this crew, it's not about soft skills, it's about the foundation of essential skills. So you'll hear a little bit more about that today as well. So we started to work together as a team last year, and started to propose this work about having each student experience their workforce passion and interest, having a common language and essential skills. And this summer, we had the opportunity to pilot our presentation or our pitch with four of our business partners. We have been going out to an additional eight business partners this fall, so we have twelve of our business partners that are pilot partners for us this year, so we can continue to work with them on the needs that we have building out as a team and as the implementation plan, but then next year, full implementation for our staff. So Mrs. Anderson and her team are looking at curricular infusion and the spiraling of our essential skills, so that all is happening. Our Workforce Connections team is broken into three different areas. We're talking about common language, which you'll hear today, essential skills, and then the personalized partnership. So everybody that you just saw stand up is in one, if not some of them, and several of the subgroups that we work together on. So I'm going to have Dr. Dirks share just real quickly on the diploma plus assets, and then they're going to go into more detail on an action item that we need from you after this presentation, if you would like to share just a little bit.
Yeah, you get a whole separate presentation on just this. So briefly touch on this, we want a hundred percent of our graduates to leave Washington High School with a little bit more than a diploma, so a plus category, the categories that we'll get into each of those in a little bit, but early college, client-connected projects, internships, apprenticeships, industry credentials, and an entrepreneurial experience. One of, I believe we have students that will fit multiple categories, but I think almost all of them should fit one of these, which would prepare them for whatever's next, just a little bit better, and then also another layer of diploma plus with distinction to set some kids even apart from that, which we'll get into in our next.
So if we think about our ultimate goal being every student leaving Washington High School with an amazing Washington High School diploma, but then this plus asset, making them more employable or more prepared for life after high school, whether that's college or into the business sector. So with that, when we started to talk about workforce passion and interest, what is, what does workforce passion and interest mean, and how can we quantify that in a common language with our students, with our families, and with our community? So I'm going to let Mary Clickcamps share just a little bit about RIASEC.
So the foundation of our common language is the RIASEC code. Excuse me. So John Holland came up with basically a personality inventory, and a lot of you have probably heard of different personality inventories, and this is something that we are currently using at the high school level. And it breaks up your, your interests and the things that you are good at, your talents, into six categories of occupations, realistic, investigative, artistic, social, enterprising, and conventional. So basically, you take a three-minute inventory, and it just asks you what you like to do, what you don't like to do, what your preferences are, and it, and it gives you a three-letter code at the end, and that basically tells them what your, how your talents marry with the things that, that you enjoy, basically. So we really want this to be infused throughout, not only the school district, but also the community, so that when we have guest speakers coming in, somebody from a bank's coming in, and they are speaking to one of our classes, they can say, well, this is my RIASEC code, so that kids can make a connection of, oh, I have an I in my code as well, maybe I should look into this career path, or just different passions like that. So this is, that's kind of, and a fun fact is that our marketing three students created that visual on the last page as well. So they're, we're infusing them in this as well. So that's kind of the foundation of the common language is the RIASEC, so.
And research would say that a student in upper elementary, and we'll talk just a few minutes about when we will start sharing RIASEC, but that a student in upper elementary starts to already make the connection to what careers they're looking for as they get older, by upper elementary, by fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. And mostly, they start to make those determinations by what they know, what they see, and what their family is involved in. So that's not always the case, but, but highly statistical would say it's what they're exposed to. So the fact that, we already had Dr. Hellebush say, exposing our pre-K students to a variety of careers early, continuing to do that in elementary, and talking about RIASEC. So Bradley Kootzman's going to share a little bit more about what we already do at our high school level.
So we currently use Naviance as our college and career exploratory tool, and students have, for quite some time, used the Career Interest Profiler to find their RIASEC code. And so by taking this profile, there's about a hundred-question assessment, and so by taking this profile, they go ahead and they end up with their Holland code. So they see a breakdown, which is listed up on the slide, and so they're able to see all six categories, and they find their code by looking at their top three. And so for this particular student, it would be a C, S, and an I for the conventional, the social, and the investigative. And then as we move forward, students can delve a little deeper, deeper, they're able to see a brief understanding for each one of those six codes, and then they're able to look at related careers for each one of those codes, too. So if they look at their code and they're wanting to know more about, like, let's say, the investigative or the realistic, they're able to select a few careers, and then those careers then pop up, just like they are on the right-hand side. There's a brief snapshot of what the career includes, what sort of education level, or monetary, or what sort of pay you may get for each one of those careers. They're able to favor, or, excuse me, they're able to favorite each one of those careers if they want to, and then that favorite list, they're able to come back to at a later date as well. If they click on one of those careers, they then get an overview of what that career entails, then they get a snapshot of what skills and experience they need for that particular field, and then the student's most favorite, the wages, how much you're going to make. And so that's broken down nationally, and then state by state, and then that updates each year as well. And then underneath, at the very bottom of the overview tab, it ties back into RIASEC. So students can search by jobs first, and then look at what sort of RIASEC codes are related to that career, and then tie it back to there. So we get it from both ends. They can search by careers, or they can search from their code itself. All right?
Thank you. So as we look at our student experiences in upper elementary, and really including Early Learning Center here, and introducing careers and having guest speakers come speak to our students when it ties to curricular areas, and then in upper elementary, fifth and sixth grade, starting to have conversations about RIASEC, having our students take the personal inventory for the first time in elementary school, and then connecting careers through tours, much like we're doing at Four Rivers for our Build Academy, and also with speakers. And then at the middle school, connecting RIASEC to our exploratory courses. You've heard last year, and you will continue to hear about the exploratory model at the middle school, which provides our students a wide range of options for what they can take and see in middle school. We want to take those exploratory courses and connect them to the RIASEC codes, so students can have a little bit more of potential, of potential choice of what connects to their workforce passion and interest. And then also at the middle school, a community career fair and career cluster conversations that are already starting, we're already starting to have, Bradley talked about Naviance at the middle school, or at the high school. We also have Naviance at the middle school just this year, so our middle school counselors are starting that work with our students as well. And then at the high school, connecting our course catalog, we know that that course catalog is huge, so how can we start to, to direct some pathways for students, and they can start to see courses that might relate to their RIASEC codes, and then connect our business sector as well to that plus experience? As I've shared some of this with, some of this information with parents, one of the questions that I get is, are you trying to pigeonhole students into a certain career? And the answer is absolutely not. It really is about giving them a wide range of, of opportunities for them to explore. I would much rather have our students try in high school, maybe a career, go out and visit, do an internship at an area that they may think they have interest in, and then decide at the high school level, they go and spend a few hours there, and that is not what they want to do at all. We have just hopefully saved time, headache, and some well-being, and some funds of college or career for those students. So having that, having that chance to experience and connect their workforce passion and interest into our business sectors. So that also comes with our parent and community experiences. We can't do this work without the partnership of our parents, and most importantly, the partnership of our community. We heard loud and clear, as we were out in our listening tours last year, that our parents want to know more about life after high school, opportunities for our students, and want to be able to connect students with what could be in the Washington area, which is why it's so vital to have the partnership with the city, the Chamber, and downtown Washington, because it's more than just about our students, it's about the economic development of our community also. So with our parents at elementary level, starting to introduce them to RIASEC, so it's not just the language for their students, but having our parents take the RIASEC inventory, having our community take the RIASEC inventory, and, and having our parents know what that means, and how the courses at middle school and high school will connect back to that language. And then at middle school, involving our parents at a career connection night, we're also having some of those at Four Rivers. Four Rivers on the twenty-ninth will be having an open house, and that is not just for prospective high school students, that really is for any student. So the, our sixth grade students that are visiting have the, have the opportunity to go home and tell their parents, hey, this is a really cool place, let's go visit it on the twenty-ninth. So opening that up to our parents as well. And then at a high school level, we know that parents are concerned and don't want their children on their couch for the rest of their life, so having our parents know what is available in our community life after high school for that career and education planning night. And then with our community, you'll hear just a little bit more about our Lunch and Learn and our podcast information, but doing Connect Washington presentations, you are getting our full presentation tonight, and that's what we have been out in businesses doing. And what we're asking our businesses for is not just about connecting our students, but we want to give back to our businesses as well. So doing that through some quarterly Lunch and Learn opportunities that are hosted by us, we will be doing our first one for our pilot company in February on the generation gap, between the generations that are in the workforce now and those that are entering the workforce. So any of our pilot companies will have the chance to join us for that Lunch and Learn. We also already have our CAP students highlighting our businesses. They did their first one, I think it, it dropped last week, and so they are highlighting our different businesses, so we're going to have our CAP students highlight our pilot companies, and those that are partners to be able to share with our parents, with our community, what, what is the workforce in the Washington community, and how can our students connect with that through Connect Washington? And then having business connections that look very similar to this representation, so having an entire menu, we get, Jennifer has seen her, her face blown up, I think, it just keeps getting bigger and bigger, depending on the presentation, but having community representation and a menu of options for our students. We said this before, that a student may be able to see at some type of business function. We said this before, that a student may be able to see at some type of business function, whether that be one of the career days or career nights, but also through this menu of options. I get a chance to, if my Riasec code has an S, an E, or an I in there, maybe Jennifer Giesek is someone that I'm going to reach out to as a student that I want to mentor or that I want to do a job shadow with. So being able to see not just the code that different business partners in our area have, but how that relates to the job that they're currently doing. You had a chance to see, mine is an SCE. But when we look at SCE, I always share with our group that with Riasec, if you think back to elementary and what you might have been interested in elementary, what I can tell you is artistic, the A in Riasec was probably at my bottom in elementary school. It remains that way now. I am not an artistic person. I can sing really well in the car by myself, but I can draw a stick figure, and that's about it. But my mother, Cindy, who you had a chance to meet, every single report card it said Jennifer talks too much. Here's the benefit now. So I remind her of that every now and then. So that, I was probably a high S even as a fourth and fifth grader. A was probably at the bottom of where I was at for my Riasec code. So if we look at mine on an SCE, we also have Tyler King, who is, I'm an SCE. Tyler's an SEC. Well, if we look at what Tyler does with the Director of Downtown Washington, we do some of the very similar things in our jobs, in our careers. But our education path was very different. Our future path is very different. The size of groups that we work with can be similar and can be different. So what's valuable for our students to see is even some of the same codes in our community give a variety of opportunities for our students. So we're excited to continue to build this out. And I know the team is already getting these back from our pilot companies. We're asking not just the CEOs or those that we've met with. We are actually asking each group that the business represents, whether it's HR, whether it's manufacturing, whether it's on the floor in a plant. We would like to have as many people take Riasec as possible, so we can build out this menu. So that is a little bit more about Riasec and the common language. And then I'm going to ask Mrs. Wilcox to come up and share a little bit about the essential skills that we have connecting our workforce.
Absolutely. So essential skills are just really incredibly important for our students to have. We really looked at the World Economic Forum, and they have four different areas that essential skills really need to connect with: problem-solving, self-management, working with people, and technology use and support. So what we did is we really took that into account. And we looked at the different skills that our students were going to need to be successful in life. And we identified 10 essential skills for our students in the school district of Washington. The way this looks, and one of the important parts around the essential skills work is to make sure that it's infused into our students' learning experiences. For example, if we looked at professional communication, I actually think that we had a beautiful picture of that tonight. We had our Early Learning Center highlighted, where they were working on making signs to communicate to their school, where they were communicating the efforts that they were collecting to be a part of our bigger community. They also had jobs that were door greeters or student greeters. That's what it looks like for a two, three, four, and five-year-old to build that professional communication skill. We continue to scale that up in our curriculum, in our work. And you look at our upper elementary students sitting in cooperative learning groups, taking feedback and making shifts and learning from others, from that listening side of communication. We continue that growth into middle school. But then we also have a high school senior here tonight who went and gave a presentation recently and was the star of the show, I heard, which is incredible professional communication, to get up in front of a board every single month to give highlights about our school. That's the kind of professional communication we really want all of our students to be able to graduate with. So tonight was a beautiful example of how infusing essential skills into the work and experiences that our students have in the district every single day prepares our students for life. Because we know that our essential skills are ultimately that bridge into the successful workforce. Oftentimes, our community and our business leaders really talk about, we can teach you the skill. But there are some of those essential non-tangibles, like we just had on the screen before. And that's what we get to really focus on in the essential skills component.
Thank you. So our last group that we talk about is that personalized partnership. So we usually talk about it as a sales pitch of, now help us out. So I'm going to let Caitlin Huber share a little bit more. And either she's going to pitch it to you like you're a business partner or pitch it to you like we want to be able to share and highlight with our business partners.
You'll have to let me know how I do on the pitch today. So the last, how we close this out when we're talking to our business partners is communicating the benefit to them. So what does this program mean for our business partners? It is a big ask to have them step up and teach our children, help us teach our students. And so we want to make sure that we communicate to them the benefit for them. We really like to pose this as providing our businesses with several touchpoints throughout a student's education. As an educator, I think that we all know that building relationships with our students is very important. I mean, that's the same in the workforce as well. We have seen a shift in how workplaces operate. I know when we were visiting some of our pilot companies over the summer, they mentioned how important it was to sit and listen to their workforce and hear what they had to say and what would make their job more enticing to accept. So really building those relationships, providing some touchpoints for those businesses to come in, whether it's come to our buildings, send our students to them, so that they are making those relationships as they go throughout elementary, middle, and high school. Our main goal, please tell Sal that I'm saying this, our main goal is to keep our students here in Washington. We have an excellent community here. And we want to make sure that our students are aware of the opportunities that Washington can provide. I know when I was in high school, I would be the first to admit that I didn't know what kind of job opportunities were out there for me here in Washington. I wanted to work in nonprofit and event planning. And so I assumed that I was going to have to go into St. Louis or somewhere else to be able to work in that field. But there are a plethora of opportunities right here in Washington for our students to take advantage of. So the benefit to our businesses is an avenue for recruiting and retention. Touchpoints throughout elementary, middle school, and high school is going to be super crucial for them. They may build a relationship with a student in sixth grade when they go in to be a guest speaker in a classroom. And that student remembers when they see them later in middle school or later in high school. Oh, yeah, I saw them. They came in and talked to me about a really cool job. I'm really excited about that. And so we provide those opportunities for them to recruit students to work for them and hopefully keep them there for a long time. Community recognition. Washington is a very volunteer-driven community. We are very fortunate, as Dr. Kephart has said, to have the partnerships that we do with our community organizations, like the Chamber Downtown and the City. And so I think that that will be a really big draw for our businesses to have that community recognition. They will have a central contact with Ms. Wieland, who's back here, that they will have the opportunity to build a relationship with. This will prevent having one particular business have 50 teachers email them, asking them to come in for a meeting. That can get a little overwhelming. So Annie will field all of those comments. Lunch and Learn, as Dr. Kephart said, we have a running list of items that businesses have told us would be important for them to learn about: the generational gaps, using social media as a recruiting tool. There's just several different things that we've touched on that would be important for them. Networking opportunities, of course. Being able to network with our students, with our teachers as well, is all very important. And then, of course, a return on investment in our community. I will not do this justice. Sal is always the one that talks about this. But we talk about how a business's investment in property taxes and the taxes that they pay that go to help fund our programs here at the high school, keeping those students here in Washington that can then go to work for them can be seen as a return on investment. So our goal is to make sure that all of our students are aware of the opportunities that are presented to them here in Washington and then grow throughout. One exciting thing that we have coming up already in December is a career fair. So we sent out a personal invitation to our pilot companies to invite them to come to our career fair on December 8th. So it's a student-led project, which I think you'll hear about a little bit more with the Diploma Plus. But it's a student-led project. We are asking all of our businesses that are coming to the career fair to take that Riasec inventory. The students will take it the day before, so that when they come into the career fair, they'll have that Riasec code that resonates with them. And they'll be able to see those codes on the tables of businesses that are at our career fair. So lots of very exciting things. It is a huge benefit to our businesses in the community, but also to our students to have that exposure to the opportunities here in Washington.
What we continue to ask when we are pitching to our pilot companies, we have a form that they fill out that can share their areas of interest and then also giving them the Riasec... I'll come back to that in a second. Giving them the Riasec link to the inventory and asking them to fill out their Riasec code. So I will make sure on Thursday, update tomorrow, that you have the Riasec and that you actually have the link, if that's something that you would like to be able to share with the committee and group. And we can continue to build that form. So I did want to highlight, as we wrapped up, I did want to highlight our 12 pilot companies. So we are very appreciative of the work that we were able to go in and very similar pitch. Again, we've done 16 of these, and it's been a variety of those that were able to join us. And I so appreciate them being here tonight and being able to highlight this amazing work and very proud of this team and the work that they are able to do to bring in our 12 companies. Our goal, 12 is this year, for not even really being started. And then we've talked about 60 companies by the end of next year. So we have some big goals, lofty goals. But when we want to have 100% of our students involved in some type of Diploma Plus asset, it's going to take the entire community to be able to do so. So I also shared with the team, our new company that is joining us, AZZ Metal Coating. Part of the work that Sal and the team at the city did was highlighting and sharing the Connect Washington work from this team. And while it wasn't the thing, it was a thing that helped move the needle to have them be in Washington versus Indiana or Illinois. So again, just super appreciative of this team and can't wait to get us fully started for next year.
Dr. Kephart, I'm sorry, is your goal 16 or 60?
60, 60.
I think it's wonderful to have the program. I'm so appreciative that so many people have put in so much time for our community. I think it opens the kids up to the entire world. Those that, you know, live in homes, that you have parents modeling careers. That may be their only exposure. But this truly opens the world and lets them know that anything is possible. So that's what I'm most grateful for, one of the things in this program.
Other questions? Okay, so with that, I'm actually going to make a shift. And as we talked about Diploma Plus, this actually does come in to an action item for you. I'm going to have Dr. McCallum and her team be able to share more about the Diploma Plus. But since it is a change to the actual diploma, then it will need to be an approval by the board.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dr. McCallum, proud prince of Washington High School. And I've been waiting two hours to speak. So I will try to not take too long in explaining this exciting program. So what we are seeking is to add two diploma categories to our traditional diploma that already exists. The traditional diploma is not going away. That is still on the table. We're still requiring 24 credits in specific areas. What is also not going away is we have several AP designations, AP scholars, AP honors. Those typically are decided by AP and how well kids do on tests. Those are still options for students. The Diploma Plus and the Diploma Plus distinction are added categories. The criteria for these categories were developed out of three different things. One, we base the Diploma Plus off of real-world learning through the Kaufman Foundation. And at one of the last slides, there's a link if you want to check out that organization. And so the Diploma Plus is our traditional diploma plus an added, a value-added asset that kids leave Washington High School with. And then those categories are broken down into an early college asset, a client-centered project asset, such as Caitlin was talking about, an internship, an apprenticeship, an industry-recognized credential, and an entrepreneurial experience. So I am going to invite some members from the team. There are several people who have worked on this. But speaking tonight is Dr. Dirks, Mrs. Wood, and Mrs. Wieland.
So when taking a quick look at each of these categories, these plus categories, value-added assets for our kids, the first one would be the early college asset. And this would be a category for students that want to leave the high school with some college credit. And obviously, our early college students, that select group that we have, would obviously fit this category. They're attending college full-time every day. A next group that would fit into this asset category would be those taking AP classes. So the requirement for this would be to take three different advanced placement classes and also take the national exam that coincides with that course. So typically, at the end of the year, students would take a national exam that's very well-respected nationwide. And if they're, it's a one-through-five scoring. If they earn a three or better, typically, they'll earn free college credit. It varies by course. There could be a few more credits for some of the courses. And then also, we have students at the high school that are enrolled currently in dual-credit classes. So if they took three of those, it would be, and pass with a C or better, they would get college credit. So we would have a group here that would get out with a full associate's degree. And those that would take and pass national exams would also walk out of the high school with credit, as well as our dual-credit students would as well. Next, the client-centered project, client-connected project. I think this is for students that want to work directly with people, our partners, or people in the community on a specific project. Maybe short of an internship or apprenticeship, but certainly working closely with someone in the community to fulfill a need that they may have. So it would have to be coordinated and approved by our partner. And it would include some mentoring and evaluation by one of the people that they're working with in the community. 24 hours would be the requirement. Four of those would be working directly with a partner in the community. And maybe 20 is going back and working on one of those projects. And then there would be some accountability at the end of the presentation. But I think the goal would be our students doing something unique to help fulfill a need that one of our community partners might have. And I think Ms. Wieland is going to be next and explain our internships.
Okay. So as you are all aware, we already offer an apprenticeship model for our students. However, we thought that it would be beneficial to also be able to offer an internship, which isn't quite nearly as intense as the apprenticeship. But it still is worth the students being able to follow their pathway, try to get some on-the-job experience without having to do the full apprenticeship through the Department of Labor. So some of the guidelines that we have discussed with our team is that there is a possibility, we could work it out, that this could be part of a class and they could earn high school credit. They will also need a minimum of 40 college credit, 40 internship hours onsite with whoever they're interning with. And there could also be an additional aspect of that, of hours that are a client-based project working for them outside of there. We also are going to make sure that it's a pathway. So we follow the 16 career clusters. We want to make sure it's an actual... They are actually going towards something they think they might be interested in, rather than just getting out of school to go to a job.
So the apprenticeship program, I'm not sure if everyone is familiar with it. It is certified through the Department of Labor. We currently have 60 students that are in an apprenticeship. I like to say an internship is learning, apprenticeship is earning. So these students are actually out there working, earning a paycheck. So these students are actually out there working, earning a paycheck. We have 16 students that have completed and have received their certificate from the Department of Labor, which is very exciting. We're only in the third year of the program. We have over 40 companies that have employed our students. Keep in mind, when I say 60 students, this includes, this is only at Four Rivers, so it's all of our sending schools too, so not every company is from Washington. We have to adhere to everything by the Department of Labor. So they have certain criteria, we have certain criteria that we have to do. An apprenticeship is anywhere from 2,000 to 4,000 hours that the students have to complete. That is not going to be done their senior year of high school. It's going to take a little bit longer than that, obviously. So it's a great program. We're happy to have it. I don't know if you guys have any other questions on the apprenticeship program. The basis of it is the instructors have to select the students. I do not select them. I don't know who's a good welder. I don't know who's the best IT person. So once they're selected, they have to meet our standards, which is 2.5 GPA, no disciplinary problems, they're always on time, they're going to be a great representative of the district, so it's great. Any questions?
The next asset category would be an industry-recognized credential, and these are our Four Rivers students. That complete one of the programs at FRCC and they pass some sort of certification or stackable credentials and complete that program and exit high school with ready to go in one of those fields. And then our last asset category is an entrepreneurial experience, and these are our CAPS Global Business Students for sure. These are students that want experience in coming up with an idea for a business, running their own business, designing a business, pitching their business, and then running it through the school year. And then at the end, also some accountability with being able to reflect on what they've done and take a look at their successes, maybe some things that they could improve upon. So those would be the asset categories.
So again, that is the Diploma Plus that we're asking to add. The second thing we're asking to add, or the second category, is the Diploma Plus distinction. So I mentioned before that we look to three things when we form the criteria. So one was the recommendation from Kaufman, and the other two came from student-focused groups and teacher-focused groups based on the Diploma Plus distinction. So the Diploma Plus distinction is the traditional diploma plus the Diploma Plus. You have to have that asset, and then it adds an extra academic challenges. So you would, it increases the total credit from 24 to 27. You would have to have four language arts, which you do anyhow, four math, as opposed to the traditional three. And then in science and social studies, they both require three now, but with the distinction, students would either pick four science and three social studies, or four social studies and three science, depending on their interest area. The rest is the same as far as the practical art, the personal finance, the physical education, the health. Those are involved in the traditional diploma. Additionally, we are adding two world languages of the same language, and then seven elective credits. And in a traditional diploma, you actually get eight choices, so they're still getting a lot of choice in this Diploma Plus distinction, but it's because the 20, of the 27 credits, which is completely possible, because if they pass every credit, even just in high school, it's possible. But in addition to that, they have opportunities to earn credit in middle school as well as summer school. So a lot of credit-earning opportunity. And then we had the extra. In addition to the academic, what we thought was important. We looked at our values, what we try to promote with our students. So through much discussion, we settled on a community service aspect, and we settled on 20 hours because we wanted it to be something that drives the students and they can really plug into. So that would be 20 hours over the course of your high school career. So if you wanted to do a few hours one year and a few next, that would be fine. Participation in one club activity or sport per year of the student's choice. 95% attendance, that's in alignment with A+ so we just felt like that was accurate. And then enrolled with us full-time. We want to retain our students as long as we can and offer them really great and rich experiences to get them to that next level. So remaining enrolled with us as a full-time student for four years. And then they either need to be enrolled in four AP classes and take the exam associated with that class, or enroll and complete the early college program, or be enrolled in a program at Four Rivers and be considered a completer. So they have completed the program, they have met the criteria and passed the required test. So they can fall into any of those categories for the Diploma Plus distinction. Are there questions on that?
[inaudible]
This is like what I've been working on all week.
I want to meet every one of those students that comes out like this. I want to shake their hand.
I get excited about silly things sometimes, but I really like the tradition of graduation and I like the tradition of recognizing students. So how we will recognize is there will be honor cords of, we're still working on the colors for that, but honor cords for Diploma Plus and Diploma Plus distinction. So that's what we're working on, as well as denoting it on their transcript. And then I think when we had our student-focused groups, they said, well, what does this mean for us? How, you know, how does this benefit us? So the work that we also have to do is helping kids market themselves and market their skills that they've participated in, so that when they go to compete for a job, or they're competing for a college scholarship, or they're competing for that next-level promotion, that they can draw upon their experiences and reflect to the person in front of them what they have learned and what they've experienced and how that sets them apart from someone.
I, I think you'll be surprised at how many kids could possibly receive this Diploma Plus distinction. But my question is, since it is a four-year plan, Mr. Koontzman, from the Guidance Counselor Office, how are we going to communicate this to our kids right out of the chute? Because it's either seventh, eighth grade and freshman year, because if you don't think about it after, after you enter in your freshman year, you're probably behind the eight ball and you're not going to be able to get it. So that would, that would be my concern.
So I can answer that with the next slide, or you're welcome. Okay. So we do agree, we want to communicate this, and it has to be a coordinated rollout. We believe that the Diploma Plus can probably roll out with next year's graduating class, because we're, we've already been on a push to have them involved in extra experiences. And I believe when we looked at this a couple of years ago, we felt like we had about 65% of our students that were, could have already left with a value-add. And we have been on a promotion to get students involved with that. However, the Diploma Plus distinction, which I think is what you were asking, because it requires extra credit and work over the four years, we need our students to have time to roll that out. So that would start with next year's freshman class. The class of 2027 would be the first eligible for that. And it would start in seventh and eighth grade, talking about it, promoting it, working through Naviance, working through those individualized plans for, for post-secondary. And then our counselors would follow up on that as they're working with students and parents.
Did you have other thoughts on that? Okay, okay.
One question I had, kind of jumped off from what he was saying, and that is that four-year distinction. So if you have a student who transfers into the district, maybe misses that freshman year, they meet, can meet all these things, except, oh, my parents didn't move here soon enough.
I think that's a good question, and I think what we would do in that situation is were they enrolled full-time in the school they came from? If the answer to that is yes, it would fall into the same category.
Okay. And lastly, I mean, this is, you know, ambitious, what's the impact on our staff and teachers?
I can say that the teachers that I met with, when they looked at the added benefit to the asset and the, the credits, they were excited about that. I, I don't think it's going to cause us to have to add staff. I think we've got room in our classes now to keep students enrolled and keep them involved in things. I mean, we could get a big influx of students and that, I might, my opinion on that might change, but as of right now, we already have several students graduating with more than 24 credits.
The benefit is that students remain with us that second semester. We have, we have met several students, handful, a good handful of students that leave us at the end of first semester because their credits are done and they're good.
Of their senior year.
Yes, of their senior year. So the, this would allow them some incentive to stay, both from a Diploma Plus asset, but also the Diploma Plus with distinction, and they would already be in our courses. So there's not a, a staff. The benefit of that to us as a board is that we would get average daily attendance on students that we don't get if they, if they leave us at a semester.
And I think for the students, just that the ability to maybe participate in something that they hadn't thought about, that client-centered project or that internship, it allows space in their day to, to do that.
Dr. McCallum, how many credits can they earn in four years if they don't take study hall at all?
So we don't have study hall, so that's one thing, but.
I didn't realize that, okay.
Yes, we do not. They can take seven credits per year, and so four years, so they could get 28 just at the high school. But in addition to that, they can do online classes, they can do summer school, and they can get credit at the middle school in world languages, Algebra I and geometry, and English I.
The middle school.
And the middle school that translates to high school credit.
Wow, okay, that's awesome.
This is exciting. We have kids doing a lot of amazing things and teachers working really hard.
As we've been out on our student listening tours, when we talk about engagement, our students are talking about how can they be more engaged in the classroom and then outside of the classroom. And this is a great way, when we talk about how does it affect teachers, I hope that the effect of teachers on teachers is higher engagement from students too. Not that we don't have that, but how can we continue that work?
And so one big thing to still be worked out is how we're going to track all this information. And we have some upcoming meetings with our guidance staff to determine what is it that they need? Can it be tracked through LUMA? And do we need another tracking mechanism? But we will get all that worked out in those upcoming meetings, should this be approved.
I can tell you, as a kid who loved it semester, because I had plenty of credit in high school, I would have loved to have something like this. Because you're right, you got, I got to the place, I had 21 credits, I needed 20. What am I doing? I, I went to work because I didn't have any incentive to stay in high school, so I think it's great.
And I think that is one of the big benefits to us, being able to have internships and apprenticeships as an option, that we'll have students that fall into that category that are still getting credit, they're still our student, but yet they're having this other real-world experience that they can count on.
And do you expect those to be local, or could a kid figure out how to do that somewhere else? The reason I'm asking, I'm, I'm having a kid come from France, starting January the 5th, to intern with me for two months, who wants to be an international lawyer, and I'm thrilled to death. And so he's leaving high school for two months to come here and intern as an attorney. Is that something that can work elsewhere?
I wouldn't see why not. I think the goal would be to get a lot of local exposure, and I think that's where the bulk of kids would probably fall. But there would be an internship committee that would oversee who's applying, where are you going? They're vetting the person that they're going to, they're checking up on the student, they're making sure the client that has agreed to take them is getting what they need and that we're all working together. So I would defer to that committee.
I like that you're considering how to track it all too, because that's got to be a lot to look at. I think in developing that, whether it be, you know, a spreadsheet where it can be printed and given to parents too, and even the kids that are tracking it so that they have that responsibility to track it, the school has a, as a backup, would be a training tool to teach kids, you know, you're, you're attacking this huge monster project and here's how to track it. So I think sharing that responsibility with the student and not putting this whole burden, you know, on the, on the staff, but sharing that with the student and the families may help them continue to track that.
We agree with that. I, I think what we're hoping is that we can utilize Naviance for part of it, because that is something the students are used to using and parents do have access to it, and it can be that planning and communication piece. So we're hoping that that can be part of it, but we need to really look at the specific criteria.
And I applaud you guys, you put a lot of work into this. Wow.
It is, it has, it's always good when it's a, when it's a team effort and you get input. So I'm just the one that gets to get up here and speak about it, but a lot of people wade into this.
Okay, so we.
Are you looking for a motion, Dan?
Yes.
To approve.
Do I have a motion to adopt the Diploma Plus and Diploma Plus with distinction? Did I get that correct?
You did, yes.
I make a motion to adopt them. I'll second.
There's a motion, and second, to adopt the Diploma Plus and Diploma Plus with distinction. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, you got it.
Can I add one thing that I think a board member might ask that's not here, that I think will be useful? You can just answer it. There's a criteria on there for them to, on the AP classes that they're enrolled in to take the test associated with the course, but there's no score tied to the criteria. And the reason for that is the scores don't come in until June, and so then it would be null and void for recognizing the students or determining if they met the criteria. So enrolled in the course and the expectation is to take the exam, but no specific score tied to that exam.
All right, thank you.
For that, okay. All right, thank you, Dr. McCallum.
And I may, my crew has, has been here, one, I know that it has been riveting. I may allow that, kind of like we do with our students, Connect Washington, if you would like, you are welcome to stay, but I know it's been a long day for you as well, and you have been through many, many of these presentations. So I appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are to, item seven, the consent agenda. Is there anyone wants to pull any items on the agenda?
I'd like to look at 7.06 separately, please.
Okay. All matters listed under, is there any other ones for our, okay, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Education and will be acted upon by a single motion. There will, excuse me, there will not be a separate discussion of these items unless one is desired by a member of the board, which Mrs. Brinkman has pulled 7.06, in which case we have pulled that and will discuss separately. Since that has been pulled, the balance of the items passed by unanimous consent. Okay, what, the floor is yours.
Just wanted to hear more about those memorandums of understanding.
Is there one specific one that you would like to talk through?
Yep, sorry, I was just getting there. Can you give an example of a student who would be in the ALIVE program and would benefit from that service?
Would that be from the first one?
Yes.
Yep.
I'm going to let Mrs. Wilcock share that.
Yeah, so the ALIVE MOU is an existing MOU that we have had over the course of years. Primarily, it serves two different kinds of functions. One would be through our health curriculum, and that would be the, when you look at the MOU, it kind of talks about the, the teaching component, so it would be through our high school health curriculum. The other piece to that would be in outside resource that we could elect to use. We have not used that as an outside resource in recent years, but it just becomes an avenue for a community resource, should we have a student that needed that resource.
This is another partnership that Lindsay at the high school uses if, if there is a need for a student that comes up. Again, this has been a partnership that we've used for over 10-plus years. Very much a partnership with families as well.
Great, thanks for helping me understand.
ALIVE is an organization that's been in, in the county for many, many, many years. They're primarily a group of women who help other women in violent situations. They're president, all the court proceedings. They're a resource for women who need to get out of a violent environment right now, and also when they have children that need to get out. You know, they're, if you, since your husband's a lawyer, he can speak to them as well. We don't always see eye to eye with them as attorneys, but they certainly have a place, and they're a very, very helpful group of people.
Right. Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion on that? Bring your motion to approve 7.06.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve 7.06 for the memorandum of understanding with the ALIVE. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that takes care of.
I may, I may pause for just a moment. Do we need to do all three memorandums? Do we need to do all three memorandums? It, the, the motion was for all three, is that correct?
I'm sorry, you're correct.
No, that's okay. We might just do, we might redo it for all three.
Is there a motion to approve all three memorandums?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion and second to approve all three memorandums. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that carries. We are down to financial reports. I think that is informational only, unless there's any comments. Any non, no citizen comments, comments from the BOE, anybody?
Just a quick, quick comment on, update on the Wings Educational Foundation. We had a meeting this morning. They did receive ten thousand dollars from helping in the assistance of putting on Oxfest, so that was a good thing. We did award eighteen early bird grants to teachers around the district, and in addition to those eighteen early bird grants, we also awarded one grant from the Larry Tobin Fine Arts Grant, so. And we do have a strategic planning meeting coming up here in the next two weeks.
Just a couple of things I want to add, Dan. One, I just want to congratulate the band, if you follow the band on Twitter, and those things, that, those, those kids have been killing it out there, been pulling in a lot of awards, and...
That's what I'm saying.
Right?
That's right.
So I, I just want to recognize them, that they, they are impressive, and hopefully maybe we can recognize them maybe at a future meeting. I think that'd be a good idea. I wanted to thank the Athletic Association for all their donations to support what we're doing, obviously, but the baseball and softball field is huge. If you guys seen the, the agenda, what they've been doing, not only last meeting, but this meeting, so I think that's huge, that they, they're stepping up to the plate and helping the district make that a better facility. There's no doubt about it. Four Rivers, just a thanks to Four Rivers for their vision on, on the apprenticeships, the internships, the IRCs. I know in, in my industry, I'm going to nab every kid out of that building trade program I can get right now. They're doing a fantastic job, and the kids that are coming out there are way better quality. And I've traveled around the state to a lot of different career centers, and I can tell you, the head of the Department of Labor has recognized us recently at Four Rivers as one of the premier training centers in the state of Missouri, especially for our apprenticeship program. So that, that's, that is a, that's a feel-good thing, not only for me sitting in a meeting, and him calling that out at a statewide meeting in front of the governor, but as well as other folks, but just what, what we're doing there at Four Rivers is, is phenomenal. And I just, I just appreciate everything you're doing over there to, to, to recognize those kids. And then thanks to all the businesses that, and, and folks that were here tonight with Connect Washington. You know, I preached for the last fifteen years, school business partnership is number one, and we, we've been doing it for a long, long time, but it's, it's like on steroids now, and it's catching on. The businesses are embracing it, the kids are embracing it, the teachers are embracing it, and I sit on a workforce investment board for Franklin County here locally, and it's a group of HR folks from all the businesses from around town, and I will tell you, I've been in other workforce investment board meetings, St. Charles and the like. We are very well-recognized, the school district is very well-recognized for the things that we're doing innovatively for, for the businesses. So I, I just thank everybody for participating in that, in that program, and, and Dr. Kepard for, and when we interviewed you as a superintendent to become our superintendent, you promised that was on, on the front of your radar, and, and you've proven it, for sure. So we appreciate that.
Absolutely.
You know, I'd reiterate what you're saying, Scott, about the Athletic Association. We're so grateful to them, and it just speaks to the generosity here in our community, and how much they support kids, and that ongoing learning that happens on ballfields and teamwork, and all those things that are taught so well in our athletics. I also want to thank Clearview for the tour of their school this week, and it's just, I leave every school tour just amazed at what our teachers do, and what the staff does, and how patient they are, and diligent, and repeating the same lesson, and the same lesson, until kids really grasp it. And it is, it's a joy to be able to get to see that, so I thank all the teachers, not only at Clearview, but across the district, and those days when, you know, it's a Wednesday, and you think, gosh, two more days till Friday, like, we see what you're doing, and we appreciate it, and we're grateful for what you're doing for our kids.
With that, our next meeting will be December twenty-first, and will feature the Julie Bell Christmas Cookie Collection, which is always excellent.
Are you asking her or telling?
I'm kind of telling her.
You should have told her.
I think that was Crimper Lakes.
It will be.
And Dan's Crimper Lakes.
That's right. I will, I will make it a point to do that. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn? And a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're done.